We've called a meeting to order, I guess roll call. Ms. Tina?
Mayor Connie Ball, Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
I just got a text from him saying he's on his way.
Okay. Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
I guess the next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting that you're approving.
Thank you, Mr. Mr.
They both made by Mike Hansel and second by Bobby Knight.
Mayor, there's a error on the minute, page three, line three. Let me see if I can find my minutes. You got yours there, Bobby?
Yeah.
On all A's, I voted no on that motion.
That's correct.
So we'll ask to approve the minutes with that amendment if that's...
That's correct.
Correct. If that's all right with...
All right.
Would you like to make that new motion?
Yes, sir.
You will second that?
Yeah.
I guess a motion been made and approved, we need a roll call for that?
Just to vote.
Just to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We got the floor of the month. Okay, who's got the floor of the month?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I've got that. Sherri Butler.
I haven't seen her.
Mayor, I think, as everyone knows, for the last several months, Sherri has been kind of a ship, a sail alone, not a partnership. She's had to take on the role of Mr. Hurst since he's been gone, trying to keep everything up to speed and going. She's been very diligent as always, she's worked hard, long hours to keep everything up and going up by herself. She now has some help and we're tickled for that, but we just felt like that she needed to be recognized for all the effort and the things that she has done to keep everything going up by ourselves. And so for that, we just decided that we felt she should be the floor of the month.
Sherri, we appreciate our little hope. Feed, serve, thankful that's for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Sherri.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Next thing on the agenda will be communication from the city administrator. Mr. Administrator, you've got a few comments, I believe?
Yes, sir. My agenda's a little, probably longer than y'all's tonight. The first thing I have on here is to talk a little bit and bring everybody up to speed about the public forum we had last Tuesday night on blighted buildings. We had about 20 people show up, three of y'all were here, appreciate y'all coming, appreciate everybody that came. I felt like there was a lot of good information came out of that. We have already moved on some of the things that were talked about that night. One of the purposes for that meeting was to try to determine what the mood or the feeling of the public was on where our focus needed to begin. It's like anything that's been kind of not been kept up to speed, you know, for the last few years. And some of that has come down to being shorthanded and being short on funding. It takes, you know, if you end up in court, you've got to spend money and those kinds of things. And we're now in a position with staff and with revenue that we can start being more aggressive on some of these properties. And so one of the things that you all had emphasized was that you wanted this done, that the blighted properties, you wanted them addressed, to try to find a way to clean up the town. And that goes hand in hand with downtown revitalization and a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish that's on our long-term goals. And so Tuesday night was the first step in trying to identify and focus on what the public perception was as to what our number one problem. And overwhelmingly, it was the downtown business district, a few certain buildings in particular. And so we have begun that process already. We've been in contact with some of the business owners. I spent an hour and a half with one of them yesterday going around, looking at things, talking, and pretty much the consensus has been that they admit that their properties are a little derelict and they have various reasons, a lot of them financial, why they haven't addressed them. And so, but they were, you know, they seemed to understand that something needed to be done, and the only really thing they had to say was that as long as they weren't being singled out and that everybody was being treated the same way, they weren't going to have a problem and they would try to work with us. They did want, of course, I assured them that would be the case, we weren't going to single anybody out, we're going to be, you know, it's the same across the board with everybody. But they did have a question, it's something we're working on, about what could we bring to the table? You know, one comment was, well, if I tire my building down, what can you all help me get rid of the debris? And so Ben and I talked about that a little bit today, and so we're looking at options on what we can bring to the table and can we assist in some ways? You know, we talked about at the last meeting, I talked about the lady with the tree, and I told this gentleman the same story, about how, you know, we've got this lady up here off Woodlawn with a tree that's hanging out over her house, and, you know, and when we checked with, you know, with M-TAS, they say, you know, that legally we can't go on her property and cut that tree. And so it's getting into the same kind of thing with these properties. You know, what can we do without crossing that line? And what I've told everybody is that if there is a means possible for the city to help them, we will help them. We can't do anything that's improper or illegal. You know, if it's not allowed by law, then we just can't do it, it's simple as that. And we, you know, so we are researching, trying to see what we can do to help, but I think the meeting was a good first step, and we intend to keep rolling with it and moving on with it. And so appreciate you all that came, some of you couldn't come, had other obligations. But I was, you know, I kind of thought it'd be a little bigger turnout, and I was a little surprised that the focus was more on the buildings downtown. We had one couple that was here that wanted to talk about residential properties, but I would have thought there would have been more interest in the residential areas as opposed to the business district. But it was overwhelmingly the business district that the folks in attendance, now that was 20, you know, 20, 20 something people, so it wasn't like the whole town was here demanding, you know. But that, the people that showed up, that had enough interest and concern to come, their primary focus was downtown. So we are moving forward to that, and I think, you know, that was a good first step, and we want to continue to build on that and try to make good things happen downtown. This year's small town Christmas celebration will be December the 4th, beginning at 6:00 P.M. It will begin over at First Baptist Church with a music program, it is going to be televised this year. Rich Lloyd approached me earlier in the year talking about that he would like to utilize their capability over there to broadcast more if we had anything at all that they could use. And we talked about this project, and he thought it was a great idea, and he's got the time secured, so it will be broadcast live on that, the cable channel that irons these meetings. Now, some of y'all have been asked to come and give out the programs at the doors, maybe you've said, yeah, you can do that, and others have obligations, so we appreciate you being involved in that. We'll also be having the Santa, and Mrs. Santa here, some things for the kids to come, treat bags and things going on simultaneously with what's going on over there. And so this is, you know, Kelly Stokely helps us with this, and this will be the third year we've done it, and we try to make it a little bigger and better each year. Our goal is to try to work our way back to where we at one time had Christmas in the city. And that was when we got the merchants to open up and stay laid and decorate and let people walk around, but we're, you know, it's, again, it's part of this long-term goal to get some downtown revitalization and bring that back. But right now, we just don't have enough shops to try to make that the focal point walking around town, there's just not, there's not that many shops to be able to visit. One, it's a piece of bad news and good news, just made me think of that, I don't have this on my list, but the, you know, Stephen Blanchard's antique store down over Giles Auto used to be, if you may have noticed that he's got a going out of business sale going on right now. And I talked to him Saturday because I was curious what brought that on. And he said it was not a lack of business, he had just gotten more irons in the fire that he could carry. His daughter-in-law was going back to school, his son got assigned or appointed to this job up at the courthouse in the election commission, he had taken over a church, plus he run a mechanical business, a machine shop, and he said that, he said he was making money down there, but he just run out, other than hiring somebody to come in there and run it, so he just decided to shut it down. But he did, he did say he had a lady that is interested in buying him out and keeping it going. So it was real tickled when that showed up down there, because that's the kind of stores you want when you start trying to have the, like, the downtown celebrations to get people to walk around to these shops, that's the kind of shops, when you go to look at Jonesboro and Clinton, Waynesville, North Carolina, when you look at these other little small towns that are doing this kind of stuff, this is a kind of eclectic shops that they have. And so we want to try to hang on to them if we can, and I'm hoping that this sale will work through or that they don't close. The third thing I've got, I've talked to some of y'all about this, is I have seen you, I don't see everybody, and I don't try, try not to run you down on every little issue. In November, of course, we've got, later this month, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, and we are closed for two days, Thanksgiving and Black Friday. And then in December, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, we get off, and that's a Thursday and a Friday. The staff has asked, would it be all right if they took vacation day, that day, those two days, to close City Hall? There's very little business that day, there's not much goes on. My policy is to keep City Hall open, that we have a minimum of two people here, I would never keep the building open with one person, you never leave one person alone. But everybody has asked off, and the only way you can do that is, and be fair, is by seniority. And it being a slow day, those two days, I don't have a problem with closing those days, but I was not going to do it without y'all being on board with me.
Myself, I don't see any problem with that, because if, for myself, trying to accommodate them on that.
Y'all feel the same.
Now, we're not giving them anything.
I know.
I mean, it's not like, you know, and I'm not trying to throw stones at the county, but you know, we brought up before about the county closing a half a day, and this is them taking vacation day, so we're not, we're not giving them anything, so another department can't say, well, they got given a day off. We're not. We're, they're taking time, they're taking their personal time, but, and the only way I can let everybody off is to close the building.
I don't believe, so far, I've not heard anybody have a problem with it, so...
Those days normally aren't...
There's nobody...
...tax days or anything like that.
Very rarely have anybody come in or call on those two days.
Okay, you said you had authority.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just wasn't going to do it without y'all being okay with, and certainly the public being aware of it.
Okay, you handle that, you know what to do for.
Another issue that we've gotten into this week, I wouldn't have wired this till yesterday, excuse me while I'm wetting my whistle. The county, and Terry and I have talked about this issue already, and he can bring you up to speed on what he found out. The county, on advice of C-TAS, has stopped giving the city rock, gravel. They have said that we were going to have to purchase gravel, if we get any gravel from them, we're going to have to purchase it, and when Ben asked them, well, how much is it, they said, well, they hadn't decided yet. So we needed gravel, so we had to go, we hunted the cheapest vendor around here that sold gravel, and we went and got some gravel and bought it. Now, I have, I have a problem with this. The residence property owners in the city, commercial and homeowners, pay county taxes. And we have researched this. And like 28 and a half cents, I think it is, of the county tax rate goes to the county highway department. Now, we did just a short math, it's going, this is a conservative number, it would be, it's going to be a lot higher than this, but we didn't factor in the commercial. But city homeowners put in about 100, that translates to city homeowners putting in about $167,000 to the county highway department. So they're not giving us anything. You know, my argument is, you know, you're not giving, you're not giving, you know, all we get, now the 6th and 7th District has representation on the highway commission, but the highway department basically does, provides no service to the 6th and 7th District. The only thing that the 6th and 7th District gets is a few gravel. That's it, for this $167,000 that the county highway department gets from the city taxpayers. So I made this argument to Terry, and Terry has made this argument to Carter Moore, and he can tell you more about that conversation.
Well, yes, I had a good conversation with Attorney Moore, who represents the county. Fortunately, he's out of town on a hunting trip himself and won't be back till the last week, but the, as James said, the road department for the county guided an opinion from C-TAS that basically says, you guys can't sell gravel, you can't give away gravel to other people, you got to use it for the county. And of course, I understand the, the county road department has been under some scrutiny lately, and they want to be absolutely sure they're doing what's right for the county and going by all their regulations. But Attorney Moore assured me that they would make every effort to, to make sure that they could work with the city, and as soon as he got back in town, which should be Thursday or Friday this week, we were going to get together and possibly with, with the county mayor, sit down and see if we can work this issue out.
Mr. Fincham, if you would, you just keep us informed on what's going on, y'all know what to do and how to work it out, you two, and so just you can report back to us what they came up with.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to give you a heads up with what we had gotten into, because we did have to go yesterday and purchase some rock. And so that becomes a budget issue, and if we're going to have to buy rock for the rest of this budget cycle, it may require, you know, an appropriation of funds. So I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to give y'all a heads up, bring you up to speed on what's going on, and certainly encourage you that if you have an opportunity to make a comment to our representatives on the highway commission in the 6th and 7th District that, you know, to express our concern over this issue.
Did you say we give to the, we pay to the city $157,000 a year?
167.
I'm sorry?
167.
The county, the county, just well like you, okay, you own your home.
Right.
You pay city taxes, you also pay county taxes.
Right.
Okay. 28 and a half cents of your county taxes...
Oh, the county taxes.
...go to the, the Cock County Highway Department.
Okay.
Because we checked, we have researched all this.
That's about 100 and...
And that comes to about $167,000 for the homeowners, that doesn't get into commercial. And so...
We've never done this before, so you, you're going to work it out.
Well, we're going to keep, this issue, this is not the first time this come up. This come up about three years ago, and we worked it out then, but this time, that time it was done for budgetary reasons, and this time, their, their argument is that C-TAS has recommended it, which is their version of M-TAS.
So are you basically hearing that this is where it's going to be exclamation point?
Yeah.
That's not good.
And so I, I don't, I, I mean, all the city people get for that 28, that 28 and a half cents on their county tax rate is gravel, that's all we get for it. Because they don't come into the 6th and 7th District and do any work. And I understand that, we got our own street department, I get that. But to say that, that they're giving us something, they're not, I, you know, you're getting $167,000 off the citizens in Newport, I don't think they're giving us anything.
That's right.
She said C-TAS said it's a recommendation?
No, they told, well, they told them they couldn't do it. Of course, it's this, anything that comes, and you all are aware, anything that comes from C-TAS or M-TAS is a recommendation, they don't have the authority to tell you you can or can't, they just tell you, you're not, you know, by law, you can't do this, but they can't make you do anything.
Is it because their ship's not being run correctly, or they're just under such scrutiny right now?
They've been under scrutiny.
They've been, the TBI came in and investigated it, and they, about, and I think the primary focus, as I understand it, was that gravel was being provided to private properties. Back to what we were talking about earlier, the county's under the same guidelines that we are, you know, and there are a lot of worthy causes that come along. And the one thing that they're, that they're really kind of up about is cemetery roads, you know, forever, as long as I can remember, you know, the Fincham Cemetery was right out past my house, and anytime there was a burial, they would always come rock that road, and it wasn't a county road, you know, it was just a cemetery road. And so that's been a, that's been a tradition here all my life, and I'm sure all y'all's lives. But technically, you can't do that. And so the TBI came in and cracked down on them for stuff like that. And so we've got called up into that whole mess, but I think it's apples and oranges, you know, they're not giving us anything, you know. They get plenty of money out of the residents of the city in Newport, and so what, you know, my question is, well, what do we get, you know, if we can't have gravel, what are you doing for us then? What are we getting for that money?
We need to fight that one.
And I, and I am, that's my...
Back in town, you've got...
I have every intention of that.
You got anything else?
One more thing, and I'll, I'll move on. And this got added today, and I apologize for not bringing this up, in a way. I had an incident this afternoon. I had, had a gentleman come and, well, I'll tell you, Mr. Robert Brannon, he came and asked for a key to City Hall. And I declined to give him one. And he said that, which he did, I am aware of this, that at one time, he had a key to City Hall, he said Scott Collins gave it to him, but he lost it, he has misplaced it, and he wanted another one. And I told him, I can't give you one. And he said, well, why not? And I said, well, that's my policy, I do not give out keys to City Hall. In the two and a half years I've been down here, I have given no one a key to City Hall. And so he got very upset about that, and started calling people, he's called the mayor, he may have called some of you, said, demanding the key, he's going to write a big article in the paper, because I won't give him a key to City Hall. And what, what they do is, the Friends of the Animal Shelter has a meeting here the second Thursday of each month, and I'm good with that, city employee, my policy on that is, if a city employee needs to have a meeting here of some organization that they're, that like that, you know, the partnership meets in here, the Friends of the Animal Shelter meet in there, I have no problem with that as long as the city employee's present, that's all I ask for. That's been my policy since I've been down here. And with the Friends of the Animal Shelter, Lisa comes, Brandy used to come, you know, there's always been, you know, might be a rare occasion where they don't make it for some reason, but there's always been a city employee here. And that's fine, I have no problem with them meeting here, you know, and will, and will make the facilities fine, but I, you know, I am not going to give out a key to anyone without you all saying do it. And he says you all will say do it, so that's why I've got it on here, and if you all say give him a key, I will gladly call him tomorrow and give him a key.
Mr. Fincham, this been discussed a little bit between some of us real quick, we didn't know about it, you didn't know about it, but Ms. Lamon's back, Lisa's back there or something, we're ridge handling, I saw some. You can always, you've got the key, you know what to do. Mr. Hansel suggested if it comes to, for here, one of the policemen, I mean, we'll make sure they get in, have their meeting.
Yeah.
And that's all it is, but if the policy is that, I don't, because if you start doing it for one, you're going to have, you'll have it all over town. And that's my feeling, has anybody else got anything different from that?
I don't have a key, you have a good one, I don't think anybody here has a key.
Just let that go, Ted.
Well, that's been, you know, that's not originally policy, it's just been my policy, you know, and I'll just, you know, okay.
I think first and foremost, it'd be a security issue, because there would be private information, personal information left to, not suggesting anybody to do that, but if they left the door unlocked, it...
Right. Of course, they are, I mean, like I say, so, you know, there's supposed to always be a city employee...
Lisa, you know how to handle that, don't you?
Yes.
You know how to handle that, don't you? Good.
Wait, 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 wait.
James, who does get keys to the, I guess you have one, the mayor has one, and...
I don't know for sure that the mayor does, he comes in the coded door all the time, I'm not positive, I would, I would think he probably has one, but I've never seen him use one, I've never asked him if he has one, because he always comes to the coded door.
Who all here had keys?
The employees inside City Hall are the only people I can tell you for sure have a key.
Employees that work in the City Hall.
Yes, sir. It's the only, now, we have a key, and I did, this is something I implemented, we have a key at the front desk that a city employee can sign out, just like the bus key, the van key, same difference, it's the same concept. And when the partnership meets, Susan, or Sherri, or somebody comes by, signs out the key, they have their meeting, and then they bring the key back the next day or whatever, and that works smooth as silk. But, you know, I tried to explain it to Mr. Brannon, but he got upset and hostile, and like I say, I wasn't even going to bring this up tonight, until the mayor called me right before the meeting, and he'd called him and make, you know, and got him kind of upset, and I figured, and said he was calling everybody, so I thought, well, the best way to do it is just address it tonight. I hate to bore you with that stuff, but he started calling everybody and...
James, let me mention one, those forms that you had the other night to report blighted properties...
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we should, you know, make those available to everybody on the council here, and then also make available, make them available in the lobby for people that come down here, so that they can report those blighted buildings.
Yeah, we, I think...
At least it lets them know that we're doing something.
We've got it online, don't we, too?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've already, we've already got it online, yeah, yes, sir, we can do that.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people I know that I get called about blight, I guess we all do, about this, that, and the other, about blighted buildings.
We're going to aggressively pursue that.
Okay. That'd be good, then that way you could, you know, you take a picture of them, or give it a dress, or a number, or whatever, and I think that is, like you said in the meeting the other night, that gives credibility to you.
Well, you got a paper trail.
The chase that we're building to get rid of those buildings.
Gary has spent a lot of time already on one property, I'm not going to get into who's involved, you all know all of them, that's in a neighborhood here over a business being run there, Gary has went up and investigated that, he's spent a bunch of time, we were reviewing some things he's got today in there, he's, I think he's got, he's already, he's going to try to get with Terry maybe Thursday or Friday and go over what he's got and see about a way to prosecute this and move forward with it if there's enough evidence there. So we're, we're aggressively pursuing this stuff, but we're going to take, you have to, you know, you have to take a systematic approach, just like we talked about the other night, and we're going to try to do it the right way, we're going to document it, because it's just like any court case, and of course, Mr. Hansel's fully aware of how that is, you build it on the evidence, and you've got to be able to come in and present that evidence in a way that the average person will look at it and it makes sense to them. And so we're taking that same approach with this. Now, these aren't criminal cases, they're civil cases, but you have to take the same approach, you've got to have your evidence, you know, just because somebody says, well, y'all think you ought to go condemn that building? Well, there's criteria that have to come into play, and if you don't meet that criteria, you can't condemn that building. You can't just go do that and deprive people of their property without due process and without, you know, meeting all the criteria that come into play.
One other thing, Lisa, I don't, will put you between a rock and a hard place here, you just need to defer to Mr. Fincham if Mr. Brannon presses you to go get the key. You agree with that, James?
Yes, sir.
Defer to him. I don't want you to be put in the middle of this.
You okay with that, Ms. Lamon?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just thought you, you know how to work it out, is what I was trying to tell you, just, okay, it's good shape. All right, now, looks like we've got some school groups back there, could somebody from school, somebody stand up and tell us where you're from and what you're, down here for, one of you?
Okay, we're from the high school, we're in the leadership, Dr. Blazer's class, and we come, well, we have to go to the state council and see how they do, and a school board, and we just...
We're glad to have you all here, we appreciate you taking the initiative, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Graham, glad to have you here, too, I guess everybody knows him, congratulations on your job, and...
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you being here, checking on things, and Dave will always appreciate what you do, I think I saw, I don't know how I missed it. Okay, the next thing is on the agenda, is appointment of the boards, well, this has already been worked out, the mayor's already appointed Charlotte Manns for the housing authority, that's already been done, and the other one, wasn't time for hers to be up yet, somebody made a mistake and put her on there, but it's, it's not on... for her to be up yet, somebody made a mistake and put her on there, but it's not on there. Now, is there anybody, Tanner Preservation Center, that needs to say anything? Okay, we'll move on.
You asked me to remind you about the memorial building.
Okay, I appreciate that, and on this side of the notes. All right, you know, Mr. Fincham and I both been trying to work on some things about, y'all been asking questions and stuff about the memorial building. Well, every time everybody says, "He said, she said," and it goes back and forth, but what we're doing is trying to get all these people together. There's about five of them in the group, and instead of talking about it, they're gonna pin each other down and find out what we can do and what we can't do. And the biggest problem is, is the roof, is the longer you leave that roof like that, and the longer it leaks in the memorial building, it's gonna deteriorate pretty fast. So, that's the thing we're working on to start with. There's some grants for this, but everybody will be meeting, he's talked to them, and I've talked to them, and we'll give y'all a recorded update on the next time we have a meeting, so, they said they will have something for us, concrete.
James, who holds title on that building now, is that...
Well, it's in, the west, what I've seen and the people I've talked to, it's in an individual's name, even though that it's owned by the American Legion Group, that they, for whatever reason, the deed is in the name of an individual. I'm sorry, I can't think of his name right off the top of my head.
No, Hicks, Bill Hicks?
Yes, sir, that's right, yes, sir. It's actually in his name, but I don't know how that come about, but like, I think Mr. Strickler, who recently passed away, it was in his name for many years, and I think for a while, it was in Mr. McGahas' name prior to that, and so, it's kinda moved whoever, the president or the chairman, or commander, whatever they call their, the lead person of their group, it just seems to fall into their name when they take over the leadership of that organization.
The Foreign Legion said they won't, don't mind somebody doing something with it, I mean, that's, they're all in favor of it, if you don't, it's gonna just rot down.
Yes, sir.
Terry, the Charlotte Mims thing, we have to vote on that?
Oh, it's sort of in...
It says in our notes, has to be voted on, so...
Okay, we need to read this, get this right here, otherwise, consideration, we've already gotten, have to vote on it.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we're gonna, you wanna take up the old business right now? Is that where we're at?
Yes, sir.
Tanner Preservation. The old business, item number one on that is ordinance number 2015-11. That's an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2015-2016. This would be the second reading on that ordinance. We need a motion, and a second, and a...
A low note.
Make a motion to accept the revisions.
Okay, then motion, second?
Who's second?
Uh, Mr. Hansel. Tina, just roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
And the second item would be the consideration, the second reading of ordinance 2015-12. And I'll read the caption of that ordinance, it is ordinance 2015-12, and ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2015-2016 for Newport Grammar School. Likewise, we need a motion and a vote.
Roger, motion made by Mr. Gribble?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fancher. Roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Okay, new business, Mr. Hurst is gonna read what the ordinances are for that, and this is the first reading on these things, sir.
Yes, sir, that is a first reading of ordinance 2015-13 to allow for the partial payment of real property taxes, and that is ordinance 2015-13, and ordinance to allow for the partial payment of real property taxes to the city of Newport. And that would be the first reading on that ordinance. We need a motion.
Roger, make the motion. Mr. Knight, would you like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Knight, second it.
Without suggestion, make the motion.
Okay, Ms. Tina, with Red's roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Is that working out, or is this kinda...
Well, we'll have to wait, like, we have the public hearing and a second reading to begin, but, yeah.
Okay, I'll read that.
Yes, Council, the next ordinance is a draft of the ordinance that has been prepared that would regulate the zoning regulation. This is basically for your information, it has been prepared, and it will go in front of the Planning Commission at their November meeting. Hopefully, they will approve it and recommend the council pass it, and then we'll have it on the agenda for the December meeting.
We could have had, you know, theoretically, we could have had it to be voted on tonight, if the Planning Commission could have had their regularly scheduled meeting, but they are required to have so many hours of training per year, and so, this past month, they went to Jefferson City for training, so that was probably spent their time, as opposed to having a business meeting, they went to training. And so, there wasn't a business meeting in October, so they didn't address any issues, so this, but otherwise, this would have been in front of them in October, but because they went to training, as opposed, we couldn't get it in front of them.
Can we consider this as the first reading of this ordinance? Or we have to wait till the Planning Commission?
You have to wait.
Yeah, we have to wait till the Planning Commission recommends it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the bids and purchase and expenses.
The first thing in here is about the home grant, and that's where we, you know, we get the grant to go around and do the remodeling on qualified homes that are approved through the state, and so, you have to bid this stuff out, and this is just the, the houses have to be inspected before work begins, and after the work is completed, to make sure that everything was done correctly, and this is just the contract to go into, this guy's done it for many years, but it has to be bidded and approved by you all before they can come in and do that work.
Is this from Carter Home Inspection, is that out of severable?
I think it is, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, it's in there, I think it is severable.
I looked, I didn't see it.
I thought I saw it, I may be wrong, I'm pretty sure I saw it in.
Do you need to vote on that?
Yes, sir.
To approve that contract.
To accept that, yes.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Bob Knight made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Hansel, roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Is this a continuance of the contract, James?
No, it's a new one, from the way I understand it, it's, you have to, you have to start, every year with the program, you have to start from scratch, and I'm not sure if this is the same one that it lasted year or not, I think it is, but I'm not positive on that.
I vote no.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Okay, the next item is consideration of truck bids for the animal shelter. Have you got those bids, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, we only received one bid, and it should be in there.
Is that the car lot of Newport?
Yes, sir.
Sixteen thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's a two thousand seven truck.
Yes.
Does that meet your needs and stuff, Ms. Lehman, is that what you, you like the truck, and that's sort of what you recommend, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all the bids you got?
Yes, that's all we got, and we went, I mean, we aggressively tried to solicit bids. We went around to the car lots, I talked to some person myself, and tried to get them to bid, and find something to bid, and they said that, you know, basically, for what we're wanting, the, you know, to stay within our budget, they couldn't, they couldn't do it.
Okay, we need to vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept that bid? I'll make the motion to accept it.
Second.
Bobby, second, Mr. Knight?
Roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is comments from citizens, have you got anybody that needs to make some comments? Okay, Ms. Sherry?
This is not really as a citizen, but I know you recognize Mr. Graham when he was, when he came in, and we're really thrilled to have him here as the new president of the Cock County Partnership. Being a Cock County native, I think his heart's in the job, and I think he's gonna serve the partnership and the community well. But I also wanted to introduce Dana Wiles, who is... Dana, stand up. Dana is the executive assistant in the Economic Development Office. She is in her second week of work, and she's catching on really quickly, and she's doing a great job, and I think she will also serve the partnership and the community well. And so, I just wanted you all to welcome her, and she will be taking over all the duties that I have been doing, and like I said, she's gonna do a great job for the community, so...
Luke, she didn't bring any contracts with companies she ended up...
I thought she was gonna scoop kids there.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can we put her on the spot a second, bring her up to the microphone?
Sure, come on up, Dana.
I want to congratulate you as well, I heard a bunch of us in Greenville last weekend on basketball play day, and I heard a lot of great things about you. Just kinda tell me what your game plan is, I'm not showing all your cards, but why don't you bring the table to make us feel like we're gonna get some things going?
Okay, well, I worked a few year, about six and a half years at the Green County Partnership. I started out in the Partners in Education Program, and then transitioned over to Economic Development, so I was familiar with grants, I actually was the coordinator for the three-star program, so I kinda have the familiarity with that. I still, I'm a different region, or was up there, so I have to meet some new people, 'cause I know we're in a different one, but I'm looking forward to just getting back into that aspect of it. I have also was, I previously just resigned as a church secretary, so I was doing that part-time so I could be closer to home with my children, and that gave me some experience with QuickBooks and things like that, so Sherry's been teaching me that, and just kinda broke me in on some of the tax forms that I haven't done before, so that's kinda where, what my background is.
Were you hands-on with Walter State, anything going on with Walter State to come to Greenville?
We worked a little bit, I actually wasn't with their new campus, but I did work with Anita, and I believe her last name was Ricker, on, with the Workforce Development Program there, and kinda coordinating some job training, so...
It's a very impressive building they got.
Oh, it's very nice, yeah.
Now, with that said, what we learned at the Governor's Conference is rural development grants, is this the lady, or are we talking to Mr. Carver, all-in-one?
I think it'll be a partnership, and whatever the project may be, it depend on, you know, who would kinda lead that project, so...
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham, I heard your interview was terrific, I've talked to some of the people on the committee, so...
Yeah, come on up here, Mr. Graham.
I figured most people know you, if you don't, Mr. Lucas Graham.
How's it going?
Luke, we're glad to have you as well, I've been going, I remember when you was a little puppy, when I left Tennessee, Newport, you were a little puppy, but just did what Coach said, heard lots of things about you, just tell us what's going on in your mind right now.
Well, I'm real delighted to be here, I'm glad I got an opportunity to make it through the non-vehicle traffic, and time to make it, I didn't think I was gonna make it for a while. I'll be finishing, tying up all loose ends at my job with Janera on Friday, looking forward to get started on Monday morning. I have a lot of catching up to do, and getting myself educated on some of the stuff that I've missed, I've been out of town for a while, so I've got some educating, educating myself to get going on the first week. But I'm looking forward to it, Sherry's done a good job filling out my schedule already for next week, so...
Luke, we want you to know that anything any of us can do, Jack, James, all the way down to me, any way we can help you in recruitment, there you might check and see, you know, if you find someone saying cooking, I spent probably six or seven of the best years of my life getting my four-year degree there, so, still a lot of folks in Crystal, and been a long time in Atlanta and Washington, so anything that I can help you out with, and most of these guys have moved around a little, and so they can, anything we can help you out with, or give you a lead on, we hear of someone looking, we'll...
I appreciate that, and I do wanna kinda massage, I do think it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a group effort, it's gonna take everybody involved to kinda get everyone wanting to go. That is one thing I do wanna kinda push, whenever we get settled here, is kinda getting everybody united and moving in the right direction.
That's what we need, bad.
Yep, so, that's something I look forward to, and I think that's gonna be something we got, we have to achieve before we all get where we wanna go.
We need to stay on the doorsteps that Amy Newe and Randy Boyd with the state, they said to our faces they were gonna help some distressed counties in Tennessee, and we were one, we made the Governor's Conference headlines, there was three counties mentioned before us, Cock County was in third, not in any particular order, but nonetheless, they said to our faces they were willing to help, so we need to stay in their face.
Yeah, I agree with that, Jeremy Phason's already reached out to me and extended his help in setting up that meeting with Randy, and I'm looking forward to getting in front of him, and being able to pick his brain, and figuring out, getting in the right direction moving forward, so...
Well, I truly believe Mr. Phason's making some strides nationally, he's in Gambier right now on a mission trip, but we need to, that's a triangle there between you and Jeremy Phason and Sutherland, I hope he's willing to help, this man, you're just getting in our face and stay on, like a duck on a jumbo, you just need to stay on.
That's right.
I think the governor and his Director of Economic Development is very interested in helping areas like we live in, that have great needs in many areas, and so, need to get acquainted with, particularly his economic development.
Yeah, I'd certainly agree with that.
The planner, I think, met him while he was down there also, didn't you, James?
Yes, sir.
City planner, and you may want to talk, pick his brain, about one of, he picked that down, a lot of information.
One of the things that we're doing, and I've got Gary focusing on, and he did down there, is there are a couple of projects on downtown revitalization.
Right.
And so, Gary, Gary's working on that, it's a two-step process, you gotta go through an education phase, that's part of what we were doing last Tuesday night, to meet the criteria, to get on with some of this grant money, and so, that's, you know, that, yeah, Gary's been involved in that already, and me with them down there, and our main focus on, through him, has been, is the downtown revitalization, but we'd certainly appreciate all the help we can get on that, to kinda help us move forward on that.
Also, tell the news media, we appreciate you all always coming, keeping people informed, too. Has anybody else got anything else? Anybody else got anything, the citizens' comments that need to be made? Thank you, Luke.
I'd like to say one thing to these guys...
I'd like to say one thing to these guys up here. We've been sitting here for a year and a week now.
Yeah.
Right at a week, and we've, it's affected some friendships, especially me and him. We used to hang around together all the time, but we're all afraid of the sunshine law to even go out and get something to eat, so, old friend, it's been, it's good. But I said that to say this, you know, we've butted heads. We've butted heads. But I think at the end of the day, I really do believe that all five of these Aldermen, and I'm talking myself here, that I don't think we have any problem looking here at what we've done. Made some tough decisions, and I have no, I have no reservations at anything I've done. I think at the end of the day, these five guys here have got, conclude maybe we've got a heart right, trying to do what's right. I don't know if they'll look like goats after four years or not, but I say, keep on digging. I think we need to keep on digging.
Amen.
Appreciate the comment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mike Hansel to adjourn. Second, Jeff Fancher.